It mustn't have a range.
Right.
It's nine o'clock on Friday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is the special meeting of the Iroquois County Board. We'll start call roll, please.
Alt, Barons, Bentz, Bowers, Crowe, Ducat, Geiger, Hughes, McGinnis, McTaggart, Offle, Sher, Watts, Whitlow, Williams, and Zunwald.
Okay, this morning we are pleased to have with us Pastor Bart Chester from Trinity Church in Watsika to lead us in our prayer.
Good morning. One verse from James, chapter three. It says, "But the wisdom from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, open to reason, full of mercy and good fruits, impartial and sincere." Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessing of this day, and we thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus Christ. Lord, today in the course of discussion and debate, we ask that you would grant wisdom from above, the kind of wisdom we just read about, wisdom that is peaceable and gentle, full of mercy. Lord, we pray that you would watch over and guide this board. We pray for the protection and well-being of those that they serve, and we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll need a call for the special board meeting.
To Green B. Suber, we, the undersigned members of the County Board of Iroquois County, Illinois, do hereby request you call a special meeting of the County Board of Iroquois County, Illinois, to meet at the administrative center in the city of Watsika, Illinois, on Friday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at nine a.m. for the purpose of discussion and action on purchase of Fastenal Building, Watsika, Illinois. That was signed by Lyle Barons, Barb Offle, Ray Williams, Mitchell Bentz, John Zunwald, and John Sher.
Okay. Everyone has a copy of the agenda in front of them. Do we have a motion to approve it? Mr. Barons, do we have a second? Mr. Hughes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same size. That motion carries. Do we have any public comments this morning? Doesn't appear like we have any public here. Move on to the next item, which is the discussion and action on the purchase of the Fastenal Building. Everyone should have in front of them information on the building from the assessment office, four different pages actually, front and back. Also, you should have in front of you a copy of an email sent out to all the board members by Board Member Ray Williams. That's on the front and the back as well. So that being said, would someone like to begin the discussion?
Did we get any clarification from the state's attorney as far as the West End area is leased out? Can we continue to lease that, or is that?
I did not have an opportunity to pursue that with him, but it's my understanding of the statute that was something we cannot do. And I think, pending his confirmation, that probably would be the best way for us to proceed. The idea being that if we can rent that space out for, to a private entity for our profit, then nothing would prevent us from buying, say, a whole block of buildings in downtown Watsika and renting those out and gaining the profits from them. Those are things that were just not authorized to do by the state constitution. As you know, there was also some concern about the management of county farm ground, and just recently the governor signed a bill that specifically says lays out ways by which that we can do that, but does not include anything in that legislation about any other properties.
So if we vote to purchase this building, then is it, is our intention or one of the thoughts to maybe combine the animal control building into the West End there?
I would imagine that if we went ahead to purchase the building, all options would be out on the table. That would be one of them, yes. That would leave us with another building to figure out what we're going to do with.
I went after the meeting and also took the tour, and I don't know. I just did not feel that that was compatible with what we really need, what we're looking for. It's my personal feeling. I'm not really sure the structure exactly, whether it's a hundred percent sound. I could be wrong just by looking at it, looking it over. I think we'd definitely have to utilize a lot of space that's in there. Big room, big building. But I know it costs a lot of money and heat, I'm sure, but I don't know about insulation, how insulation is in the building. But I got, I didn't get a comfortable feeling with the whole thing, and I am against it.
Doug?
Three questions. What is, what is this building costing to purchase it?
According to what I was told by, from the real estate man, it's available for two-hundred-thousand dollars.
Two is, what's it going to cost to bring it up to compliance with the different entities that have input, building inspectors, the ADA, electrical? Do we know what that cost is going to be?
I don't, I do not know. That's something that we'd have to engage somebody to.
Right. Third thing is, what is it going to cost us to project to maintain that building on a yearly basis? Why I'm asking these is because as part of the negotiations committee, we need to put quite a bit of money towards our employees, and that's going to take a chunk out of our budget monies available that we need to take care of them. And so if we have another yearly expense that we don't know how much it is, we can only spend our money at one time. I'm just concerned that there's so many unknowns with that, this short notice of this decision.
That being said, I think, I think I would make a note that we are committed to finding a place to have a morgue. There was some incidents that occurred yesterday in the county that put an exclamation point on that. So I think it's something that needs to be at the top of our list of getting things done, and that's going to cost some money to do. But on the other hand, I think your point is well taken, that, and we need to have, if we had plans to occupy seventy or eighty percent of that building right away, then it might make sense, because that occupancy, whether it was with another government agency providing rent, or whether it was one of our own operations, it's something we would be needing to do. And I'm not sure that that's, that that's the case here. That's what I think we're struggling to find. Mr. Barons?
Everybody's concerned about how big it is. Did any of you guys talk to any of the department heads or anything like that? Because there is a need for space. There's always a need for space. And we can move the dogs there. We can sell the other building. And the sheriff needs space. They need a place to detail vehicle, or not detail, but to get them ready. They have parts that are for vehicles that need to get set up, and parts out of vehicles that they have to store. That would give us a place to do all that. EMA has four pallets of stuff scattered around. They can be consolidated there. One of the places they have them is in the coroner's office right now. The coroner's office, he needs a place for a morgue, but if he can move his office there, that office space is going to be needed. The, with the Safety Act, there's going to be body cams on every officer. Every second of that footage is going to have to be gone through by somebody. So we're going to be looking at hiring more people just to do that. And it's not just viewed. They have to be able to delete people out of the background that are not involved in the scene to protect them. You know, so you're looking at this piece and this piece and this piece. I'm looking at the whole county needs, and this building may seem big to you guys. It's not. It'll get used for county purposes right now that are needed. You know, we keep trying to shove more things into buildings that are existing, and that sounds fine to you guys, but have you actually talked to the people that are working in these buildings that have to deal with working around that stuff? And I don't think any of you guys do. All it is, I pick up the phone and I talk to these people. There is a need. And as far as costs, yes, it's going to cost to maintain. We spent a hundred thousand dollars on this roof a few years ago and on the jail roof. Costs are just, it's, it's going to happen. At two hundred thousand dollars for building that size, we were, to build a building the size of this room was going to cost us four hundred thousand dollars. You're just, the value that we would get out of that room or out of that building compared to what it's going to cost us to build or do anything else, it, the value is there. The last time it was sold, Donna looked it up, I think it sold for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So it's not like they're inflating the cost. You're saying no? I don't know. I didn't look it up. That's what she told me.
It's right on the sheet in front of you.
This is the last time it was sold?
It's later. It's what the, what the assessment, I don't even know, it says at a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
Is that page here? Or which page?
On the first page where it says assessments equalized value is forty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's for the, for this year. If I apply that by three, it comes out to a hundred and forty-one thousand. Not change.
No, that's the assessed value. I said last time it's sold, it's sold for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
We don't, for some reason, we don't have a record of that. I'm not sure why.
Yeah, I don't know. She, it's probably on the front of the property record card.
Jill, can you go down and ask Mia for the front of the property record card on this?
Yeah, I would, but they'll talk when I'm gone.
Okay. I think, I think to your other comments about the need for space, I can't disagree with that. On the other hand, I would point out that there's a lot of space right in this building here that has not been utilized very effectively. There's a large room in the southeast corner of this building that's run it out to Champagne Regional Planning Commission, Workforce Development. I don't think there's been anybody in that building or in that room for the last two years. Just sits empty. Same thing in the health department. Gave the health department additional space when we had the pandemic. Pandemic is over now. Go walk through the health department, and you'll see a lot of space that isn't being utilized very effectively.
So what are you proposing to move in there, the morgue or the dogs? Or are you going to sort of?
Maybe the four pallets.
Okay, four pallets. That's fine.
Just, just let me finish if you want. In regards to animal control, we have an individual that might be interested in becoming a veterinarian here in this town. And so if that's the case, we would be likely to be keeping animal control right where it is. That's something that is yet to be determined, obviously, but it's just popped up recently.
I'd like to make the defense for the existing animal control building for a variety of reasons. That it'd be, if you look at the overview of the proposed building, putting the outside animal cages, et cetera, would be very difficult.
At the West End, it wouldn't be a problem at all, but it's a concrete pad right there.
Well, would you want them on concrete?
Yes.
Why not?
Cows are supposed to be on concrete by COVID.
But was the proposal that was rejected, well, for concrete on the other one, the one that was?
Concrete was going to have to be added in the future.
The other point where you talk about four pallets, you can buy a forty-year, forty-yard container, forty-foot container for two thousand dollars plus travel costs, probably twenty-five hundred dollars, which would take care of storing a lot of stuff, including the pallets or stuff. Right now, in this building, there's file boxes. You look different places. So you could have storage there. The proposed building, if you look at the, much of the flooring, it's been upheavened, uneven. I don't know, hydrostatic pressure or whatever it is, why it's caused all that breakage. If you look at the main roof, because the building was built in two stages, seventy-three and eighty-four, the West End was built in eighty-four. The one that's currently pretty much leased. The other parts got quite an extreme slope, and you look to see water evidence on the old concrete. And I don't think it's for plot gutters because of leaves, because there's nothing near enough to do that. So I think there's an overflow when it rained because of the stiffness of the roof. I don't know, I don't think that was originally a metal roof. The metal probably didn't have it. So that whole roof would be quite large, maybe six thousand square feet, seven thousand, out of eight thousand square foot of building. Would have to be redone with a total tear off, extremely expensive. The sheriff's department is getting more calls near fifty-seven. Now, I asked Lyle for the addresses of the two buildings in Narga, and one of which might be a combination coroner, police station, but I didn't get the addresses. So the police demand of deputy, the sheriff, is further west in the county. If you look at the call numbers and the analysis of the needs. And normally, if you have clients that need a particular thing, you analyze what they need, you consult your architects and engineers, maybe you build a suit. I don't think this building is suitable for what people are proposing it.
Mr. Bowers?
If we got the building for a lot less, would it make it more viable to us? I mean, I realize that if you've got an empty space, you're going to fill it. There was something in there. But say, let's make them, if we made a different offer, would that be better for us? Well, we have empty space in the animal control building right now. It's been there for a couple of years, and we haven't filled that yet.
My biggest concern is the unknowns of cost, Paul, on what's it going to cost to bring it to compliance?
Right.
And the maintenance.
Fifty grand, if when you look at it.
Doubt it. I don't. The, the outside skin is the original skin on the original part of the building. And on the north side of the building, you can see the rust deterioration. And my vast experience on some old farm buildings on family farms is that rust goes up a lot further than you realize. When you start to replace, say, the bottom foot, you find out now you're doing the bottom three feet. Right. You've got a damage overhead door there that sometime ought to be addressed. Well, the one that's covered in, that's a throwaway, too. There's one that's hidden. Well, the one, the one that's on the first, the eastmost door, if you look at the tracks, you can see some metal fatigue particles.
That's the one for the morgue?
Well, that was, he said he wanted that full site, which is a lot more square footage than what I could justify. The morgue, the coroner. The other issue, you've got the parking lot. Who owns that parking lot? It's split. And then you got the maintenance side of it. If somebody says, I want this maintained because whatever reason, insurance company says, then all of a sudden we get thrown in with some expense of redoing a parking lot that it'd be budgeted. Yeah. There was, there was a picture of a lot that showed the, the, one of, my guess, one that was originally built, developed, was all one owner. And if you can picture the CNC plumbing building, and you see the northernmost corner, add about four feet going north, and then draw a line going east to west. There, there you go. Okay. The, so, and the driveway, if it goes down into whatever the street is, it's east of there, that is on this parcel. But it may be easy to grant it to the other, so you can't just fence it in. Right. The other driveway is pretty much split, not quite fifty-fifty. It's maybe sixty-forty in favor of this parcel. If you look at the northern side of the, we all have, we all have that.
Okay, I guess.
So where the lights are aligned, that's the property?
That's, that's the property.
That's what we're responsible, the owner would be responsible for.
And I don't know which way the water flows when it comes down, but I'm guessing that this field flows to the north. This might be a good deal, but do we know all the costs? I'm just concerned. The realtor mentioned some of us we could sell it in a flash. However, it's been available for a long time. It's not on the market yet. Well, if, if you're looking for, for commercial property, you contact the existing properties.
I don't think they're listed. We were, we were told the same thing about the building that we looked at, hooked that up and flipped, and it's still, still sitting there. So the two properties that Mr. Williams referenced in the wire has been available for a long time as well. There's no guarantee. Even the animal control building that we own right now, if we were to move animal control over to this building, I would be surprised that we would find somebody to buy that building very soon, as we gave it away, and even that.
Isn't that in a flood plain, if you're talking? Does he not be able to show that?
There's another building right to put away, so the North of the fire station, one of the ones that, that Mr. Bowers' wife gave us information on. I believe it was either you or John. How long has that building been sitting there? Nobody wants to. It's not an easy decision, that's for I'm sure. And I can see, I can see good points on both sides. I think that's probably the case with everything that we look at in boroughs and towns, that we have to weigh back and forth and try and make our decisions accordingly, so.
Mr. Chairman, having been on the management committee for five years now, we've looked and looked and looked. I feel, you know, all over the county. And, you know, and we've seen all of the costs of building skyrocket since nine COVID and did. And I, I think that, you know, and the sheriff's department is expanding. You know, we have more police cars now to maintain, and now we're doing police in Gillan and Argen, Alexis, and in the county. So I think that was a point Lyle, that would get on his point. But I think one of the things that, it's a really good location, and I think it will always be valuable as far as a commercial property and things like that. So I mean, if we were ever selling again, you know, so. Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns, but.
Bear in mind with the sheriff's vehicles, that it's his intention that each deputy that has a vehicle takes it home with them. And as far as the maintenance on them in the West End of the county, he's been having Angel outfit over on Argen to do that, where he claims that he's been getting very good prices and very good service from them.
Is this building, it, it does meet ADA requirements, or are there some bathroom issues or something?
I guess there are some issues, but I'm not sure what they are. I'm sure there are.
Yeah.
Even just with the doors. Most people open doors with five pounds of pressure.
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you're going to disqualify it for that, then let's get rid of this building, because we got a whole list from the federal government with the FISA that we're going to have to look at in this building before the next lease with them, because they sent it after the last lease, and that the state's attorney brought that up, that they did not bring it up during the lease. Well, I'm sure during this next lease, there's going to be a lot of things on this building that's going to need to be redone.
Either that, or you don't renew their lease, and there's your space.
So you're going to put the morgue here?
Right here in this corner.
No, I'm serious, because one of the reasons that we haven't put it in different places, and one of the reasons that we need a morgue, is for bodies that nobody else wants, even other morgues didn't want. And that may not happen very often, but when it happens, it happens, and you got to deal with it.
Okay. It's not what's in the bed in the military. You know what comes back through those aluminum containers. That's my only comment on that one.
Well.
There's, there's no way you can build a morgue big enough if you want to consider the whole ultimate catastrophe. That's something that everybody recognizes. That's why we have intergovernmental agreements, mutual aid agreements.
And the refrigerated semis. What, today, right now, what are the alternatives that are still existing that we could do some of the morgue? Are the two buildings in Narga still available?
Yes.
It was.
Okay. This one's available. Have we looked into the costs of adding on to the, your progress, Drakes? Bill, have we looked into, got any cost figures on?
I began that, and I, I haven't done a lot on it the last few weeks because of some of this other that's going on, as well as some other things on the calendar, like with our negotiations and all that. But that is an option. There's also the option with the hospital.
What happens if we kind of table this, pursue those other ideas to come up with actual costs? In the meantime, we'll get some of this negotiation budgeting behind this and establish. If that building comes and goes, I'm sorry, it comes and goes, but I don't know if there's going to be a lot of takers in Watsika. And set a date out there to have all this information available to make a good decision.
You know yourself from meetings with the mayor, there's buildings in Watsika that have been sitting vacant for a long time.
Agreed. We get the address to the two buildings in Narga.
They're West Seminary, but I don't know.
How about addresses, sir?
I don't know exactly.
That way you can look up the data. I'm a data guy. How about the, how about the management committee trying to come up with actual costs of?
That's, that's the best that gets you. You go back to the management committee.
We'd just like to have costs of three things, of what it costs for the building, if there has to be any updates to it, and finally, what's the projected yearly cost of heating it, et cetera, maintenance.
I think, I think when we looked at this Fastenal Building, those questions came up, and that information wasn't available. I mean, they can't be made available.
Has the realtor given us any paperwork on it to show taxes and?
No. No, usually they don't. The way it was presented to me was that when the building was made available, we were given the opportunity to acquire it before it went on the open market. I can't tell you how true that is, but that's what was called to me. I guess maybe it's proven by the fact that there's no for sale sign up, or it's free of fire, but.
I know we've been kicking this can down the road for quite some time now, you know, trying to locate a place, but I kinda agree with Mr. Geiger's proposal there, that we do that, but we could do a little, and, and we need to do it soon. I know we need, sooner the better. But that would give us a better idea, maybe, of where we're going with this, before we make a decision on this particular building. My thoughts.
Is there some reason why we're not seeing the address of these two buildings in Anarga?
I don't think we know them. I know where the buildings are, I can take you right there today if you like to, but I don't have the address in my memory, I'm sorry.
Well, look, the reason is you wanna see what easements, like on this Barista Building, that ownership might have a requirement to do the entire parking lot resurfacing. You know, easements or other requirements. You know, that's why you like to look at the files.
Wonder would it ever make sense, or be possible, certain if, for the county to lease a building from a private entity? It might be new construction, and therefore, the prevailing wages wouldn't come into play on the construction side of things. Is that legal?
I believe it's possible for us to lease space, and we've done that before. I wonder how exactly how that would work. As far as then acquiring the building goes, I don't know, that's hypothetical question.
Part of the reason the building is falling a thousand dollars is the prevailing wages that.
That was, I think they said that was thirty percent.
Yeah, leased, yeah.
If we were to add on to the shed out here at the sheriff's place, it'd still be prevailing wage there too, and although that's, that's the cost considered. Now, now the hospital option, are they building a new building on that lot? Offering a room to us?
The hospital option right now is that they have what's called a maintenance shed. It's being, it's occupied right now by using it like as an office for the maintenance supervisor. And we believe that, from what I've been told by the hierarchy at the hospital, that he could be relocated elsewhere in the building, and that area that he's, needs utilizing could be made available for a while. I don't know how much, how much the cost would be to remodel some of that area to make it suitable. Might be very minimal. I have not had the opportunity to look into it, just yet.
Would that office be enough room for the corner that you're talking about?
I believe so, yes.
Maybe the management committee needs to look into that a little bit more. It doesn't sound like this is gonna fly, us buying this building.
By the comments, they're always gonna tear something down and replace it with a new building.
Talking about, they took the clinic down, and the house, Northerly Clinic, and they're talking about with their physical therapy, that's out here, they're a little confused building, moving it there. And they're in the works, this critical access they got this week now is one of the little hurdles they had to go through. But it's still gonna be some time out. One of the alternatives would be temporarily use their facility if possible, until something else is available. I don't know if the hospital would give you the room, they might. Right, they might build it, which they wouldn't do prevailing wages, they would just do. But then people forget about too, is when somebody passes away in the hospital, currently, the hospital people takes them down and puts them in the cooler.
And then you could call and try to.
And then when somebody wants tissue, organ donor stuff, if it's an organ donor, they have to keep that person sustained, so they take him upstairs and they keep them, their life support going, until somebody can come in for harvesting, which is usually quick. But on skin, tendons, other things, you don't need to have that, so they put them in the cooler, and then when those people come in at nighttime normally to harvest, they bring them out of that, take them to the operating room, and they harvest them. So now, if we put that morgue in Gilman, then the coroner's gonna wanna take that person over to Gilman, and then bring them back later when necessary, I don't know.
Or they coordinate their release and transfer.
Hospital isn't gonna want somebody there. Just like NAPS doesn't want somebody in their basement, the hospital isn't gonna wanna have somebody just laying there. So, anyway, it's just another, in the thought process of how this is all gonna flow.
Steve?
My, my understanding, and I, I don't know this for a fact, that there's a state law that the animal control cannot be with the morgue, is that correct? I don't know.
There's no such law?
Oh, okay, I don't know.
Because the coroner has stated that there are places that have open tanks.
Okay. Yeah, there's like, there's a a discussion with a current board member, they said that, well, the animal control could be moved into this building. Possibly. But I thought we could want the animal control bill just a few months ago. The, the old vet there.
Right now, with the animal control building where it is, there's, there's a possibility that we're gonna have a veterinarian to come in there.
Oh, okay. But that wasn't, I already mentioned that, but I.
It's just something that's come up here in the last few days.
Okay.
So I, I haven't even had a chance to talk to the veterinarian yet about it. I'm optimistic that something might be worked out. You always have to approach Roseanne for help. Until we go through that process, I don't know. But if, if it does materialize, that that the veterinarian will open up office hours out there, and also have responsibility for animal control, then I think we'd want to. I don't know.
Okay, that, that, the other thing.
That hasn't been established yet, and that's a clear condition.
The other thing that I was thinking, correctly across the highway from this basketball building that is available, I know that's lower, that floods three foot. And that might be the issue with the, the concrete that's discussed in there, that's on even the floor. So I have probably hydraulic, hydrologic.
I do, I do, I can, I can offer you this information on that part of it, that when we were out there ten days ago, there were three of us that walked around the outside of the building, Donna Crowe, Barb Offlin, and myself, along with the realtor. When you walk around on the backside on the grass, you can feel the moisture in the, in the ground and the wetness there, it's more than what you would expect to see. So that tells me that, yes, there probably is water sitting in there, and the weather's bad, there's a higher moisture content in that area, and it freezes, that, that's been affected before. But that, again, I don't know for a fact that that's what's happened to cause the floor, but it's likely the department did this. Mr. Barron?
If we decide to send this back to management, I want a list of every question that you're gonna have, every possibility, because management has been working on not just this, but other projects. And we go through a lot of work and a lot of effort to get something, and we bring it to the full board, and the goalpost gets changed. So we've done the work for nothing. So I wanna know exactly what this board expects from us before we go to all this work, because I'm not gonna spend another six months trying to figure out something just to have the board say, oh, no, we want this instead. Because it's a waste of my time, it's a waste of the county's time. We need to know what you want. If this isn't it, I wanna know exactly what you want, what our budget is. Otherwise, why should we even do it? Because you're gonna change the goalposts on us anyway.
Okay, well, I'm probably guilty of that, because I asked what the square foot requirements are, what the address of those other buildings, so I can ask the right questions. And I've been involved in some aspects of commercial real estate much further north, and done rehab on buildings, and made mistakes, obviously, because we certainly didn't overdo it. Made money anyways. So it'd be nice to know the square footage, proposed plans, what the coroner really needs. Like for the coolers, how many square foot in the building? Because he, he needs an overhead door, what size? You know, whether eight foot high door will do it, or a nine foot or a ten foot, does it need to be a sixteen foot wide? What water, what drain requirements? You know, there's specifications. So we can adequately serve what we'd love to serve, just the people in this county. And I know it's tougher on you, I understand that. But when you can't tell me a damn address, I'm an alternate thing, and the sheriff wants, needs to off the space out that way.
Wow, we're talking about just the morgue today, you got our good question, how many square feet does he need to have for viewing an office, if that's what he needs?
And now he's a shower stall for himself, if there's, whatever it is, I guess that's one thing to come up with.
He, he probably needs a thousand square feet plus or minus a hundred. All depends on, on the space and how it's configured and so forth.
Well, let's say he needs a hundred and a hundred and fifty feet for his office, which would be pretty sizable. And then the cooler, then maybe an open space to bring the vehicle in to, to remove, you know, some privacy when you're transferring the bodies.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All those, all those things are great about the morgue, but the problem we're having today is other issues, like what's it gonna cost to repair this? What's it gonna cost to fix the parking lot? So that's the kind of list that Lyle's wanting, that, that.
You know, we're looking to see what, what our needs are, is sheriff's got some needs, she's probably got some storage box needs.
We need a list of those things.
There is, you know. And the, the cost to replace that floor would be quite expensive. And it may not be a permanent cure.
So the can's getting pretty beat up, that we've been kicking down the road on this project. We've been working on it a long time.
I talked to Mr. McTaggart, I don't know which day, but about this. And I told him, what really needs to happen is a comprehensive look at the whole county's needs, top to bottom, and then move forward. If, if we're not gonna do this today, then that's what needs to happen. Every department, what their needs are gonna be, what they project them for the next five years, ten years, whatever. Top to bottom, and go from there.
Good point, prioritize those needs, you're right, probably a good point, Mike.
So no matter what we do, new, used, whatever, there will be maintenance issues, there will be costs. And I know the county doesn't have one. And I'm kinda glad the county doesn't have one, because that means we keep the taxes low. But it makes it difficult for us to work.
So are you proposing, are you?
I'm just saying what I think needs to happen.
That we, we table this thing, and that we do the comprehensive thing that you asked for?
I don't know how long a comprehensive thing like that would take.
Put a timeline on it, that they've got a requirement to initially put stuff in in thirty days, and reviews in sixty days?
Well, I'm sure a lot of them are busy with other things.
Typically, in the past, long range planning has been part of the budget process over here.
And it's a little late to do it in the budget this year. I mean, it could be done, but it'd be.
There's already been some discussion of going up that, at the finance committee meetings on the budget. Ted?
I'll meet with the sheriff and get his needs.
His what?
I'll meet with the sheriff and get his needs, what he needs, what he feels he needs.
I've pointed out that I don't know how we could pay for a maintenance person full time toward all eighteen squad cars that are relatively new. So I would hope that that doesn't come forth, we need a spot to be able to work on our cars.
I know, like you said, like you said, Angel's doing a lot of it right now.
Exactly.
And I'll, I'll guarantee you, if you compare that to the price we were paying previously here in town, we're saving some bucks.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just saying, I don't think we.
No, gotcha.
Keep our cars efficient and effectively.
I asked the sheriff about squad cars that, that you can see sitting over there by the car doors. What, what are those all, what's that all about? Is it responsible? Those are cars that are, we're getting rid of, they're waiting to go to the dealerships. So I don't think we need to provide a house for them to stay in. The other squad cars should be, should be, if his plan is to have the deputy take him home, shouldn't require any housing on our part either. Like you said, from the maintenance standpoint, if he's satisfied with the work that Angel is doing it, probably gonna be more effect, cost effective than we had our own people doing it. You could guarantee me that he'd have a couple good trustees that could do some of that all the time, that'd be fine, but that isn't the case. Especially now to safety equity, to jail population. So I guess we kicked the can around this morning, where does that leave us?
I make a motion we close discussion. And do what? The first thing is to decide that it closes the question, the second thing is to decide to have a vote in terms of what the vote chooses.
Do we need to close discussion, or does that make it more difficult for you?
I, it, I mean, it's just more words that have to be typed, but whatever, it doesn't matter. It's not necessary.
We just, we just need to decide what we wanna do. Do we wanna table this matter? Do we wanna do we wanna not pursue it any further? Do we wanna go ahead and pursue it? I think we have three options.
I make a motion that we table the dis possibility of purchasing the locations mentioned in today's documents.
Do you wanna add to your motion that they could negotiate it all in price?
No, no, we're just, that was the motion.
All right. And the second by Mr. Whitlow. Everybody understand the motion? Just gonna table the matter. Further investigative, further information, further investigation. Other options as well? I guess we call a roll.
Okay, you're gonna have to forgive me, because I forgot to scratch out names and get confused on who's here and who's not. Okay, Alt?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Bent?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Geiger?
To table it, yes.
Yes. Uh, Hughes?
Yes.
Mm, Sher?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Whitlow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Zumwalt?
Yes.
And Alt, did I call you already? Yeah, I started with you. I'm like, I have you marked.
He gets two votes.
Sorry. I know.
All right, the motion passes, we'll table the matter and further investigation, and see where we go.
Can we come up with a list of options to help the management committee to start with, of locations? You think it's a thousand square feet is what we need to talk for the morgue? Does that make sense to you, a thousand feet?
I said that's plus or minus a hundred feet.
I think the building we were looking at, the building was thirty by forty.
A hundred, right, okay. So let's bring that information to Lyle of the management committee, the address is in Anarga, and whatever else we might have available.
the addresses in Narga and whatever else we might have available. A rough drawing of the coroner's needs would be helpful. Make a layout with me and what it is.
There is a layout in the finance office.
Okay. And let's see, we can't get some closure on this, probably Derek Woods.
There's a piece over here at the maintenance shed, for example, at the corner, I thought would be ideal. Was a pile 26 feet by 32 feet.
And we get some costs on that then?
So that I can help you get some idea on the square footage. Okay, I think we got that figured out. Do we have any old business to come before the board this morning? Mr. Watts?
There's another property that I saw, the Kennedy Laboratory building in Watsika. And I'm not blocking the waters anymore, but I think that could be a possibility, it's a thousand square feet. And.
How many?
Eight thousand. And the asking price is 180, I believe. I was gonna go look at it, but I thought I'd wait till we see what happened to this meeting. So I mean, it's another possibility in town.
Well, in regards to that, that's good, fine. At the end of the last night of the meeting, I said I wanted options for our next meeting. So.
Get them to you.
Get them to me.
Okay. Do we have any old business to come before the committee, before the board this morning? Do we have any new business? Do we have a motion to adjourn? The question by Mr. Bowers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.